All right, everybody, we'll go ahead and call the council meeting to order. If everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, do we have a forum?
Yes, sir, we do.
Excellent. So the first thing on our agenda is to review the minutes from February 1st.
Motion, reasons to accept it? Accept it as written. Second.
All right, Stan has the first, Tom has the second, all in favor? There you go. All right, thank you very much. One of the things that came up, actually was mentioned in February.
You missed the executive minutes. It's not attached to the agenda, but it's behind your agenda on the paper, on your desk.
Okay.
It's not stapled.
All right, so we have the minutes from our executive session also on February 1st.
Motion.
So Stan has the first.
Yeah, I'll second.
Tom has the second, all in favor of approving the executive session minutes? There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so first thing that we have under new business, and it was mentioned in the minutes last time, is we had a request to bid out one of our contracts. Prior to doing that, however, one of the things that staff wanted to do was improve and implement a procurement policy for bidding out contracts. And staff has worked on that, we have scoped it, drafted it, Attorney Sears has reviewed it, and we are just bringing it to council to show them that we've got the procurement policy. And we will be ready to begin preparing the bid, the bid package for whatever contracts we decide to let out, one of them possibly being GFL, waste, the waste pickup, solid waste disposal. There's really no action to be taken for council, I just wanted to let you guys be aware that we've got it, we're going to be implementing it, and this will put us on the path to getting new contracts bid out as we see fit. Brad, is there anything that you would like to or think you need to add about the procurement policy?
Not if it's on the, except at some point, council would have to approve it.
I would actually like them to approve it today, because we need to adopt it.
Okay, all right.
Because it does supersede a current policy.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Is this written with Brad's authority overseeing, everything's good with it? Brad, everything good with it?
Well, yeah, it doesn't go into as much detail as some, but it makes the appropriate references, you know, about bidding public work projects with, you know, references to code, which requires, you know, bid bonds and performance and payment bonds over certain amounts. So, but it does look like what the town needs at this point. And I guess second thing, it brings you up to speak, current policy does not permit using the online bidding services that the state has, so this brings that in line.
Is there any reason to hold gifts to a maximum of $200 or $199?
That's the town's ethic ordinance policy, or the ethics policy that we have.
I've never seen any gifts. That adds anything to that. Not on my watch.
Would it open up a can of worms, just eliminated gifts altogether? Would you have to go back and change your ordinance as well? I mean, I don't see why we want to take anything from anybody.
Um, no, I mean, that's part, in other words, yes, you would have to change the ordinance. Right. So this just reflects what's in the ordinance. So if you want to eliminate this, you could, but then you'd go back and you would have to change the ordinance. But I think this basically follows state law. So.
Well, I for one am not going to be bought off for $199, $200.
All right, well, a lot of times, like, other counties are like $20. Do you want to send a box of candy at Christmas time or something like that?
There you go. If we need to move, what did I vote, we accept it as is?
We have a motion?
I'll second.
All right, Elizabeth has the second. All in favor? All right, thank you, motion passes. Second thing under new business is pine straw. It's time to make the park pretty again. And we have three bids, they range from 1916 to 2190. We have three different quotes. Does staff have a recommendation for any particular vendor? I know that we've gone with Arbor Valley for the last time, the last couple of times.
Yeah, Arbor Valley has done it since I've been here. Breaking Ground is the actual nursery that just moved to Turin that actually put in all of our landscaping, our new trees and so forth. And then Southern Roots, he tries to bid every time we have something, so I would like to change it around a little bit, let somebody else new do it.
I agree.
Well, it's between the high and the low, slight $270 difference.
Yep, yep. I think it's $283 from the biggest to the, from the lowest to the highest.
But, you know, if they haven't done it every year, I'd just go with the cheapest, I mean, straw is straw, yeah.
Labor is labor. We just get it 75 cent less a bell. And we need a pretty good penny of it, so.
All right, if I can get a motion to accept one of the companies?
I'll make a motion to accept the Southern Roots quote.
Yeah, I second that.
Southern Roots?
Yep.
All right, Elizabeth had the first, Tom has the second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So item number three is a follow-up to the phone call that I made a week and a half, two weeks ago. We, if you'll, do they have this in front of them as well, Dana?
Yeah, no, they do not.
No, they don't, okay. So, so the emergency purchase is with Tucker Septic. We had, this was the Friday before the first farmer's market that we had. We had a little bit of problem with our bathrooms vacuumed, and we've been working through some maintenance issues that we've gotten resolved now that we know about them. But basically, all three of our tanks were pulled. It took them two septic trump, septic trucks to pump out our tanks. And the charge for that was 14, $1,450. I had originally indicated $1,000 to $1,200 in my email and phone conversations to each of y'all, but because it took two trucks that had to go all the way down to La Grange, the price went up to 1450. This is coming before council to approve it, and then also to update you guys on the other septic system improvements that we've been working towards and through. So, do we want to go ahead and do a vote on the 1450 and then talk about some of the other, some of the other items?
Yes.
So if I can get a motion to approve the 1450 in septic, emergency septic pumping that we had, what day was it, was it the 28th?
It was March the 19th.
19, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's already been done and paid for.
Yes, it has, mm-hmm.
But we still have to put it on the agenda to be approved.
I mean, it's nothing hanging over his head as far as the payment goes.
No, it's already been made.
All right, Elizabeth had the first, Sitthe had the second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank y'all. So, one of the things that we have learned over the last couple of years is there's sometimes a maintenance surprise as we're learning about the systems and all the different things. The septic tanks out here is just something that needs to be maintained, should be maintained, and we now have it on our regular schedule. We have had some diagnostics done, we've just had some, it flushes slow, it gurgles, and sometimes it doesn't work like it should. But part of that is because we've identified a belly in the septic pipe from the, from the outside building into the tanks. Basically, the pipe just kind of bellies out just a little bit, and then comes up and then goes into the tank. So, the long-term fix to that is to dig up, the hand dig, the area that's right back there.
It's already marked.
That's already marked.
It's already marked.
And then basically just relay some of the pipes and shore them up, so everything, everything runs downhill, it doesn't go downhill and then back uphill. We ended up spending about, a total of $600 spread over about a three-week period to find out where the belly of the pipe is, and it's, it's right there near the corner, and the plumber showed us, and then the septic tank people said, yeah, it's probably right here, because you can actually see where the ground has settled. And that's all it is, it's just, it's settling. And in order to get this to function at a maximum rate, to also eventually include, hopefully, some of the drainage from up here, this is going to be something that we're going to be getting quotes for and bid out to come before y'all in May or June.
Needs to be done sooner than later.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes, it does.
Because with summer coming on and people be using farm.
Well, that's the biggest thing, is the rentals.
The plumber also recommended that if we could get some, and Dana, you may have to help me out here, some, some high-flush toilets that can help push the water through the pipe, that will alleviate some of it, but the true fix is to raise that belly up about six inches, however much.
I'll get into it later, but I don't think you need a Band-Aid fix.
No, we don't.
I agree.
No, we don't. But all that being said, it's performing better already now that we've gotten, you know, 1,500 gallons pumped out there.
Still needs to be big, though.
Yes, it does.
There was a major clog, a major clog.
Yeah.
Unidentified, the clog.
Those situations are expensive when it arrives, so I'm all in favor for taking care of it while it's not a problem, yes.
What was your question, Tom?
The two, the thousand gallons that you had to take, the two truckloads, is that mostly water?
No.
No.
I wouldn't think so.
So we don't have a problem with water getting into the tank?
Good drain line, though.
I don't, groundwater, no, but there, because, no, all of the liquids are pumped uphill and up to the triangle property.
But we had a pump put in for that.
Yes, yes, and that is functioning properly.
Tommy, if you look on the invoice, it says on there, water coming back in from the drain field, it's not checked, and you would have checked that if it was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I know that, just a reason I ask, is round here, we have problems with water getting into the tanks, not through the flushing, not through the backfilling, just not, not groundwater, it's water, you know, that runs over it, it goes into the hole.
We are a little lower, so.
Yeah. And part of the septic repair is going to be fixing the pipe in between Arbor Valley and, because not only is this complex on it, not only are those outside restrooms, the restrooms from Arbor Valley are also tied into it as well, and they have one in the office, and they have one in the shop. And of course, the shop pipe has suffered some damage, and we're going to have to get that replaced as well. That is probably priority one, and then priority two is that belly, but we will be working on quotes, we're going to trench plate it for now until we can decide whether we're going to end up redoing the Arbor Valley parking lot. But that's, that part is a little bit down the road, but we can, we can repair the pipe coming from Arbor Valley, and then we can repair the belly over here, hopefully with the same crew, that would be possible. Daniel and I have had some conversations about working on it in-house, but I don't know which is going to be easier. Because it's really just going to be a couple of couplings, replacing the length of pipe, and then putting the trench plate over it, is going to be the interim fix. And of course, once we get quotes for that, and get the bids for it, we'll come back before council and let it before y'all. Dana, is there anything else that I need to bring up regarding?
No, I think that's it.
The septic?
Yeah, I think that's it, we just, um, need to go ahead and move on it pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Just a question, who last time was pumped out?
We, we don't know.
It's been way before my time, would you ever remember, Ms. Collins? Do you remember, do you ever remember it being pumped out? Probably not, since it's so new. I don't think that it would have probably been pumped out.
Yeah, because it hadn't been there but less than 10 years, right? Because it was about 11 or 12 when we redid the exterior, right, and the park? Something like that, so this.
18 years, I think.
I know, right? Especially considering how much use it's gotten over 10 years with the rentals that we have and the events.
So they've been, lines are working well, just the bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And there's always a chance that it's going to get recalled, but at least we know that it's not, we know where the issue is. So, all right. Okay, so, do we have any other questions on the septic? Half of that was an approval, half of that was FYI. So the next thing that you have in front of you is some, let me see, if I can find my packet, here it is, it's going to be this one. On December 13th, 2021, Sharpsburg turns 150 years old. So we are coming to you both as an FYI and then to solicit ideas.
What day is it?
December 13th, which just happens to be a Monday. So we may have a council meeting slash birthday party that day. We've got several things that we want to do with other nonprofit and/or county city groups to celebrate, but what I wanted to talk with you guys about specifically today was getting some banners to put up on our streetlights to celebrate our 150th. And this right here, this, this artwork in front of you is, did the banner people do this, or did we do this internally?
Randy did it.
Randy did it, okay. So this is just a, for, if, if y'all want to, we can, can go out and look for another more artistic sign, banner, if y'all want to, but I was thinking for now, this may be a great way to put it out that Sharpsburg is 150, and it's coming up, and to kind of start promoting some of the events that we're going to have around the 150th. And then, of course, the second part of that is to solicit ideas and whatnot from you guys that y'all think would be fun and exciting, and could, it could engage the community.
The banner company is going to tweak this to our, you know, liking.
Okay. This was just to kind of give y'all a concept of what we were thinking about.
So are you looking to promote the 150th all through the long term, the summer, with summer events or just the Christmas?
No, I think, I think we are. I would like to have a little bit of public input and public visioning on how to do that, but I think if we could kind of drive the process and have two or three things, and then open it up to the community at large and see what they want to bring in. Right now, we're looking at doing a, just an artifact and historical record display through the Newnan Kalwita Art Association, Newnan Kalwita Historical Society, and then doing an art project with the Newnan Kalwita Art Association. And the PowerPoint that you have are just some of the things that we have access to and the things that we can, we can bring in for an actual historical exhibit and or display.
Do y'all have a time capsule?
No, we do not, but that is one thing that is kind of, that's perplexing in the back of my mind, that we wanted to do some kind of time capsule. I, I wonder, and then, because, and see, that's, that's another thing to think about, because if we want to do a time capsule with us about to redo our park out here, we probably could find a place to put it and then have a marker on it, and then that way, it'll be there for another 150 years or whatever.
Cool.
Yeah, that'd be real cool.
And you can get the kids, children involved in their bid.
Yep.
Put some stuff in.
Mm-hmm. So Julie, do you want to talk a little bit about the banner quotes that we've got?
Uh, yeah. Display Sales is the company that we use for our Christmas banner. And they came in at $56, which was the lowest, right?
Yep.
Because I don't see the.
$581.
Yeah, a total of $581 for the nine light posts that we have in town, and you've got to see the other banners, so they're quality banners, they're printed on both sides, they're fade-proof. We had two other businesses, one was way out of sight, and one said that they could not, yeah, they're here, they could not meet our, they don't do projects like that, so. I would recommend this, you know, Display Sales for the banners, they have an art department, and everything goes back and forth between us and approval.
Where are they located?
Uh, they are in Bloomington, Minnesota. We did have a local guy, and he said he doesn't deal in this type of work at all.
This company already did our Christmas banners, and they turned out very nice, I thought.
So this only could be for the nine poles? What about one for the, like, the building? You want one for the building?
I mean, I'd certainly be open to it.
There's all other kinds, and you know, there's tablecloths that you could do, there's big banners that you can attach by, you know, rope to a building, stuff like that.
Yeah, like, I think, like, the old days, they just attach it from one pole to the next in the middle of it, crossing, something like that.
You're talking about, like, across the street?
Mm-hmm, a bigger banner, yes, I mean, I mean, it won't hurt to get a quote on that.
It'd be a bad idea, have it at the four, up here on all four sides, like that.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
And we also were looking into some merch, you know, pens and.
Coffee mugs.
Shopping bags, that kind of thing also. And we have gotten, you know, pens. We looked at stylus pens, you know, imprinted with the town name, $250, 250 pens through eBay would be $99 plus free shipping. Quick as a wink, which is the local company that does our T-shirts, they came in at $162.50 for 250 pens, so there's a big difference there. We also did quotes for the non-woven shopping bags, kind of like the supermarket bags, made out of that.
Canvas.
Well, they're, they call it non-woven, so it's not a actual fabric, it's more like a polycrylic or something like that. 150 bags through Quick as a Wink, which is our local vendor, would be $148 plus some extra fees for the art setup and shipping, so, and then mugs are kind of on the expensive side. Quick as a wink was $698 for 144 units, and then a company that we found online was $430 for the same amount for 144 units, and that's the minimum that they would do.
So are we thinking these would be handout gifts, or we're going to have them available for purchase here at Town Hall?
Well, we didn't discuss the purchase, but we were thinking handout gifts, more closer to the event.
To the birthday.
More closer to the birthday party.
Okay.
So at the birthday party, I mean, I need 140, I don't think 140 is enough.
Well, that's the minimum we have to purchase.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, if we got them now and used them as, until then, and then had 20 or 30 or power, meaning by the time the birthday party comes.
That would be good.
Yeah.
And then if there's other items that you guys, because Elizabeth, I know you do a lot of promotional stuff with, with your profession, if there's other items like this that would be suitable and would be appropriate for the birthday, I mean, we're all ears, these are just a couple of things to get council to start thinking about.
I really like the mugs, pens, people don't, normally, they tend to just throw away mugs if they've got them. A water bottle?
Yeah.
Are those the same prices as the water bottle?
No, we haven't, we'll have to look at the water bottle pricing.
Because everyone has gone with the metal ones, kind of like the Yeti cups, which are very expensive.
But we can look at, we've got some displays that we can look at, get pricing off, just different kinds of, with our town logo on it, so, yeah, we'll bring that back to the table.
Yeah, water bottles, maybe then the pens, maybe equal the same price of the mug, at least you get two gifts out of one, instead of one.
Yeah.
Maybe even a calendar for the year, since it's so close to the New Year.
Yeah.
Time's short.
So the only thing for us to really approve tonight is going to be the banners, and then staff and I'll work up a list proposal as far as other items, and present that May or June. But if I could get a motion, if it's council's wish to go ahead and do one of the banners, we can go and get those started and get those installed.
My motion to use Display Sales for $581.
All right, Sitthe has the first.
Second.
Who?
Second.
Stan, okay, all right, Stan has the second, all in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, so that concludes the new business portion, do I have any other questions about any of our new business? Okay.
When are they going to start with pine straw?
Um, probably in May, probably, we've, we've got a big month coming up in May, graduation parties, we're about booked out, April, I mean, April, May, and June, we're pretty busy, and our rentals are really picking up, so we're excited.
Did they have any availability for next, to do it next week, because we've got Team Hungry next weekend, or this upcoming weekend?
I don't think he's, I don't think he's going to be able to get it next week.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, sure.
I'll call him before I leave tonight.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, Dana? Under old business, we have an update from Dana with Integrated Science and Engineering. In front of you, you guys have smaller copies of this as well, but.
I'm going to go up there, yeah.
Okay, one, two.
Now, I'll break that to these.
So. So basically, since we have acquired the Beckham property, we had a meeting with, I guess, Ian County, and their advice was to, to take a look at the Beckham property, see how we could actually truly utilize this to make a better pond. Um, and to save us potentially some construction costs, because now that we have that, this additional section of property, we can make our pond a little bit bigger and, and hopefully save some money. So with that, preface being said, Dana, I'll let you over.
Okay, sure. And the first one, I'm gonna hold this one up so you can see it, and I should have numbered them different, but this one leaves more land.
Let me see.
Sorry, this one leaves more land next to the house, basically untouched, and keeps the pond in the, what would be the rear portion, the backyard. Uh, the difference between this?
Where's the house?
Oh, um, sorry, it's not showing up on here.
Yeah, it's not showing up very well.
It's like right there.
If you use the bifocal part of your glasses, you might be able to just see it.
I see it, it's just really light.
It's very light, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see it now.
So, um, so basically, you remember the, the other plan, which was approved and approved by NRCS, and we could actually be constructing it today if we wanted to. Um, also involved having a drainage swell on this back portion of this property to take, uh, the pipes that are coming through your, behind, behind City Hall here and through your parking lot, and to take those pipes and have, had like a drainage swell going around the, the pond, and we had a smaller pond. And we weren't able to actually provide detention for all of the stormwater improvements that we really should be doing it for. But I mean, that's a choice the city has to make. If you want to do that or not, you would still be in compliance, but you do have a lot of water coming to this pipe down here, all the way from the square and even beyond. So what we found was that we needed to impact that land anyways. Then we found that that land was available. Probably, if you see this, you can see that we did get it surveyed in Topo, so we know where everything is out there, with the exception of septic tanks and drain field. So, we put together two options on how we could expand onto that land and not change very much of this, but still provide everything you're looking for. And the kind of things we were looking for is a park-like setting so that the stormwater wouldn't just be a pond, that you could have, um, walkable slopes on some parts of it that could be landscaped. And maybe some of that, maybe some of those beautiful azaleas and things over there could be transplanted over to the pond area and incorporated, or another landscaping project that you have an expansion of what you got going on downtown. Now, this one, the second option, is a much bigger pond, way more expansive, coming over to the side of the property. And I've even thrown some on-street parking on here, since I know you're going to probably need some extra parking.
Even if we use the house as part of the, the outline?
Uh huh, yes.
So, um, now this one has more shallow slopes, this is the one that's going to create more of a park-like setting. We're, we're even able to, um, hopefully save some really beautiful cotopat trees down there and propose like a little, um, pocket park and give people a place to go on the walking trail, not just to be walking, but to actually go see the flowers and stuff that we're going to be able to see, because there's some beautiful flowers over there on that property. The only problem is with this plan, it's a little bit high in the sky right now, because I don't know where the septic tank drain lines are. And I tried to get that information from the health department and they don't have a record of it. So it's very old, is what I think. And we're going to have.
And it takes up a lot of the back home property.
Right, and that's already not a very big tract, so this, the pond would be encroaching a lot more, but like I said, it would be a four-to-one slope, so it won't feel as much like it's a pond, but it still would be disturbing it to the point that if the septic tank drain lines were there, they would have to be moved. So that's where we are on that, until we find out where those septic tank drain lines are. And Blue is going to try to help me by talking to the, um, previous owner. At worst case scenario, I guess we could possibly get out there poking around, maybe hire somebody with a camera or a plumber to help find it. Uh, there's a good possibility that it's a very old system anyways, and if you're going to use this building for city services, you may need to look at doing a new septic tank, uh, excuse me, drain line at least. Anyway, so, um, basically here to present to you tonight, the update that we have, got the additional land survey to Topo. We have laid out two different concepts, one that's focused a lot more on beauty and function, and one that basically just gets the job done, but it's not going to be as park-like. But it does preserve a lot more of that land for future use. When the city has things that they know they need to do down there, you would have more land available. So you, you got to weigh those two options. And where we're at right now is we kind of need some feedback from you, and we need to know which direction we're going to go. It's not going to take us long to fix the plans, but we kind of have to know which direction we're going.
And because we, because they are doing some re-engineering and some more engineering, there will be a sixty-eight-hundred-dollar change order for the plans.
Yes.
But you can look at the amount of work that has gone into and would continue to go into it.
Right, and sixty-eight-hundred dollars is just for the plan update. We, I also included in that price, um, for Blue, we got some hourly estimates for construction services for installation, during construction, for insurance, for control. We usually do that on an hourly basis. I, that's due a lot of cost, but it would be built hourly, you would only pay for the time and expenses. So I broke it out into lump sum and time and expenses, a lump sum of sixty-eight-hundred to update the plans. However, I'm going to recommend that you do also use our services during construction for quality control, so that, you know, we're not having to do things twice and they get done right the first time. And so that will add an additional, it could be five or six thousand, but it really depends on the amount of time that we spend on the job site.
And by making the ponds wider, we're hoping to save some money on the construction costs, because we're not having to build eight, ten, twelve, fifteen-foot high wall for detention. So we're hoping to realize some construction savings, but plow those back into getting more for our money.
And this is the one that allows us to do that, the one that we really need to know the septic tank drain line's location or decide how we can handle that, because if, if you can see towards the top of this, um, we're basically just cutting downgrade a little bit from what's there now, the dam is only going to be down in this area.
That little square right there, that's the house, right?
Yes. That square right there.
So is that a little path to like a fire pit area?
It's a path to what we're calling a pocket park, but you can have a fire pit there.
That's amazing.
And that's where those trees are and some of those flowers that we indemnified when we did our sidewalk that are really amazing. And we want to try to save them if we can.
I like how this, this plan with the larger, um, gives, gives more area to walk, you know, I mean, it gives you, you're not just walking around the parking lot, you feel like you're walking.
Right.
With a view.
Around the pond.
And this allows us, because we got the Beckham property, this allows us to keep and maybe even expand the playground.
Right, keep the playground and expand the playground, not, not shrinking it down, and also have some picnic areas beside the playground. I suggested that, because mamas need somewhere to sit when kids are playing. You know, I know.
We got to plant some shady trees.
Yes, and this one also has a storage trailer moving up to the property line from U and Arbor Valley, that right off of the drive, so that it could be accessible from the paved driveway. Uh, that means only really one side of it is going to be used by the community, that we talked about that. The trade-off is that you have a picnic area and a bigger playground.
And, and I'll be honest, the backside, I was hoping that the fireworks were able to use the backside of the container as almost a backdrop area. That hadn't, that hadn't happened, so.
Let's just go ahead and, and our recommendation would be to move the container up here.
Yeah.
Along with an improved access and drive for Arbor Valley.
Right.
And you can still get to the, the East Caluita side of the neighborhood.
And it, and it's going to be easier for you to get to the doors, to access the container.
Yes.
For the needs of the community. For, I think you use it mainly for storage, right? Um, and like I said, I really went all gamebusters with it and added some on-street parking, just because I know if you're going to use that house down there, you're going to need it. Um, that's not engineered, it's just on there, two-D. When you start engineering that, there could be a small, um, between the parking spaces and the, um, walking path, there could be a small wall. That, I'm talking like a knee wall, that you could also sit on and rest, and you could put landscaping behind the knee wall between the walking path and the parking spaces.
Yeah.
Um, there's a sidewalk currently shown there, but that would likely be steps if you connected the two, just because of the grade change. You don't have to connect them right there, that, that's something we would have to talk about if you want to consider steps right there, so someone can park there and get straight on the walking path. But like I said, this is probably also going to involve the city for that house. And that's something the city needs to probably look at, because I don't know what all other improvements that house might need to be able to be used for city services, so you need to really look at the, the overall cost there. Because the septic system is going to run you a minimum of six thousand probably for that house.
Septic tank and the drainage.
Yeah.
Well, and, and honestly, for any public or, or even public use, even with this staff, we're going to have to, we're going to have to not rebuild the house, but we're going to have to make some major renovations for, for ceiling, for roof, you know.
And I was just looking at the outside of it, there's, there's some obvious maintenance repairs.
The joists, the floor joists needs to be worked on, the roof and the electrical, there's a lot of things.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure if the city was going to go down that road and keep that house or maybe consider taking it out. You just, you have to look at the cost of it now, if there's there.
We have not discussed it as a council, but we're talking with most folks, are we, we think we would prefer to keep the house rather than.
Yeah, I did have that information.
Caluita tax, do you have access to that?
At least, maybe more than that.
I want to just talk with the slide.
No, it, I see that, the, the houses on the other side of the street were brought down when College Park extended one of the runways, that's where three of them came from. And I don't know if that is where that one came from. I, I, I don't know if it was originally there before.
Kim's been there, I'm trying to think. I'd say at least the seventies.
Mm-hmm, I think seventy-eight was what it had on the, on the property.
It was actually built in nineteen fifty-five.
Wow.
That does not make it a national.
I told you, I told you. Almost eighty.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, what, fifty-five? It's about sixty-five years old.
Yeah.
I was about to say, my mama's going to be real mad if you do that.
She and I were the same age.
So, yeah, but I'm going to leave both of these bigger prints for you guys to look at and just, you know, get an idea of what's going on with these. I'll leave these up here. I'll put a background there, actually.
So I think the question before council for tonight is to discuss and or approve the sixty-eight-hundred dollars in the change order, and then for us to begin thinking about what is going to be the end use or the end vision for the Beckham property. Obviously, we want to incorporate the park settings, but, but before we start doing as much of this, I'd like to kind of have an idea of what direction we want to go for the building. And just see what your thoughts and feelings are on it.
I thought we was going to use it for, uh, office space too.
That's what I would love to do, office space, wreckage retention.
If something's happening here, we can have a meeting down there.
Yeah.
And, and we don't, and, and I want to make sure that we.
Or go ahead and, go ahead.
Um, I was just saying to make sure in the direction that we want to head in, we don't have to make any specific decisions tonight. I'd like, even like to get some public input as well on the end use of it. But mainly deciding and recognizing that these changes are going to use up and take some of the property, and as long as you guys are okay with the direction that we're going towards, knowing that a final decision for the structure will be made late summer, early fall, perhaps.
We're making it better, I think, you know.
I thought that was intended by it to use it for.
Correct, it was, mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't want it to tear down.
No.
No.
I think we need to, um, I would recommend finding out where that septic tank drain field is sooner than later.
He actually called me back after I called him, so I'll.
We may know tomorrow.
We may know tomorrow, or maybe, maybe even this evening.
Unless, unless we bulldoze the thing, you're still going to have to replace the septic system.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That's a given, I think.
The se, it just baffled me that the health department had no records.
No records.
Not even where it was originally installed.
Try to find, try to find.
That's very, that's actually very common.
Yeah.
There's a lot of properties that they have no idea.
No idea.
You know where Win Pond is?
Yes.
Okay, there, there are septic systems over there that consist of a fifty-five gallon drum.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I've heard.
And that are shared by two houses.
That's no good.
So there's no telling which is.
There's no telling.
Oh.
Indeed.
Yes.
Fifty-five gallons with two houses?
Yes.
And where is this at?
Twenty-four and a half gallons a piece.
That's, well, that's, that's, that's right next.
That's a shower for me.
It's up behind Costco.
Right next to Peachtree City, it's right off of, uh, fifty-four North.
Oh, my word. Can you believe that? When you bought that house, it didn't have a septic?
There's a number of, over the years, um,
Oh, wow.
wastewater has been handled in unique ways, uh, sometimes incorporating a drum, sometimes it's just a straight pipe. And there have been houses in Charkburg that it's just a straight pipe.
Ms. Polly, when she bought her house, did not have septic tank. And that was in what, what year did you buy your house?
I've had it twenty-two years, and they had, I went to check to see, they laughed and said, I wasn't older one.
Scary.
So which, um, so which of the concepts do you guys speaks to y'all? Is it going to be the one that has the larger?
Me, I think so, for me.
Larger detention?
If we're going to do it, do it right.
Right. You can't go back and change it up, or, you know.
And that was something that, that one of the county officials, uh, uh, said to me. He, he said, you know, you can go ahead and, and do it. He said, or you can step back and leave a legacy and do it right. And it's taken, you know, about eight weeks since that meeting, but at, but at the same time, it, I think it's time well spent, because this is going to be here for the, forever, hopefully. So I think making this investment now is, is what we should and what we ought to do.
Dana, I'd like to make a recommendation. Um, you've got that walking trail going right in front of the, um, gazebo. And we have a lot of weddings and stuff out there, and right now, the way it is, there's another one that's out here. So if we could extend that there instead of right in front of the gazebo.
Yeah.
Um, you can just, you, I don't know if y'all understand, this is the gazebo right here and the sidewalk, the walking trail comes right in front of it. And I would prefer that it stays where there's a little sidewalk in the middle of the pavilion, right here, somewhere right there. And I think if we just move it out, the walking trail away from the gazebo.
Yes.
That would, I, I like that idea, but.
And I'll go ahead and, and we're, we're bumping right up against our public comments here. If there's any comments or questions that, that are from the public, we'd be more than happy to answer or entertain or, or, or take input.
Share, please share.
Uh, you just have to, you alluded to water coming back into your thing, you have to just make sure your drain field is, is not, that's more important than actually the tanks.
Right.
Having been through that in other times in my career, you know, so.
Okay.
Best to get a good drain field.
Yes. And I think we've got a pretty good drain field, right?
Oh, yeah.
You're talking about down there?
Yeah, you're trying.
Six hundred and twenty foot of that easy flow.
Yeah.
Up there, yes. And also with the additional downtown, there were. And also with the additional downtown, there would be a hundred foot additional line and be involved.
One of the recommendations. So, so are, are y'all thinking about tying that septic tank into the municipal system and pushing it up, or...
No, you have to pump it up here. You have to have a pump tank down there. It can be done, obviously, that's...
And money and machines.
That's right. I think what you would be better off doing down there is look on the other side of the house where there's parking and like a little building there. And see if there's an opportunity, if the, if the system is not already over there, to move it over there.
Okay.
So that the use of this side won't be impacted by the septic drain line.
Okay.
And if that's a no-go, your only other option would be to try to incorporate it into your system here.
Well, I don't think that'll be getting a whole lot more use than this would be, so...
Yeah, that'd just be for us, just...
Like one restroom is just probably gonna work.
Yeah, just one restroom, you know?
Um, another thing, another bonus that we didn't know about when we purchased the property is there's actually a well on there. And that well can then be used for our, at the very least, our irrigation for our park, which that water bill runs us how much, Dana?
Well, it really depends on if we have a leak or not, but, yeah.
So that, we will see some cost savings in that with irrigation.
We had several hundred, um, I think it was eight hundred dollars when we first turned it on. There was some leaks over there and we lost, I don't know, two hundred and something thousand gallons. Where it went, we don't know, probably the drain.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the stream.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, eventually, right?
Have you, um, do you know the history? Is that well still open?
We're gonna, uh, Dan was, Dan was supposed to get me a well guy that would come and look at it and get some options, which I haven't chased, in fact, I need to do that. Can you remind me to do that, the well guy? Dan's well guy? Okay, so the motion before council is to approve the sixty-eight hundred dollar change order to proceed with these planned changes.
That's over above, how much are, how much are we already into it?
Um, twenty-eight, was it twenty-eight thousand?
You've already, yeah, you've already paid...
Twenty-eight thousand, some, some, something.
Twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety of the original thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty. Um, there's currently three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars that we have not built yet for, but will be coming soon. Some of that could be put under this new, um, sixty-eight hundred because some of that was the concept work that we've done here. Um, some of that was work we did before the concept changed. So, um, I was actually gonna recommend that maybe we close out the old contract and start a new number. Since that might make it easier to track. I don't know if you want to do that or not. But that's really just a financial thing.
Would we close out at the twenty-eight plus the three that's pending?
It would be less than three, it would be twenty-eight plus probably, I'm not sure.
Was that for the permitting though?
The permitting, that, and we did do a little bit of work on the permitting, but obviously that was really our time expenses. There's no permitting fee or anything like that. Because you don't have to pay yourself a fee and, and no money has been spent, has been sent to the EPD yet. So that fee still is outstanding. But it would move to the new work authorization. Um, like I said, I think probably maybe fifteen hundred or twelve hundred of that might be on the old plan and then twelve hundred of that might be on the new plan.
As long as we don't exceed what council has authorized previously, the thirty-two...
The thirty.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. As long as the closing out the first one doesn't exceed the thirty-three and then we propose to council the sixty-eight hundred plus the time and expense.
Right, as we accrue those, yeah.
Approve those. And that way, they're not going over what they originally pledged to it and then we're knowing that we're starting with a new number.
Exactly.
Brad, do you see any, um, issues with doing it that way? Does that sound like it's...
So when you have like a bigger pond, is there, is there like a state, you know, EPA like square footage or gallons that you guys are gonna run into like a, a larger study for that costs you like a lot more money with a larger pond?
No, not in this case because the study's already been done with the original pond.
Okay.
Um, we, we actually completed that work a while back, but we weren't able to make all the stormwater go into the ponds. Uh, there's a lot of stormwater from, uh, in the downtown area that currently just goes out of those pipes, straight through the railroad. And we were gonna maintain that moving forward and just provide stormwater detention and water quality for the new impervious, which is gonna be the park a lot back here, when it's paved. But now with acquiring the land, we can have a bigger pond, which means it's shallower. It takes up more land, but it's not as deep.
Right.
Um, and it will also take in all the water from downtown and treat detention and water quality for all of the impervious surface the Schutler had in place today. So technically, we'd be bringing you up to the current state stormwater regulation. And from this day forward, anytime you add impervious surface over five thousand square feet, you have to address water quality and detention. I know that's very technical and I apologize, but...
But we also have the EPD person.
Yeah.
Not that side.
Not that side.
I, I, I hand out the money for the projects like this.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay. So Luke has the first?
And I'll say.
All right, Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, so that concludes both our new business and our old business. Uh, we now have time for public comments. Do we have any comments from the general public? Ms. Polly?
I do. I've got two comments and they're separate, but they still connect, but, and it's, I'm gonna take this off.
Thank you.
Um, it's based from last November, which was the last town council meeting I went to. And I had a moment just over in my mind because it was disturbing me a bit. First part of the comment, and I've got a copy, so you won't have to write everything down. Um, it's called the new administration activities and policies, and I'm not gonna read them all. But the changes and positive things that have happened with the present administration is traffic has been improved with four projects and policies. Library's got three. Uh, promoting and, uh, publicizing in town is done, five. These are all positive.
Mm-hmm.
Miss Alanius has got five. Now, that's all I can think of except for that's a compliment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But...
Oh, no. We knew that was coming, right?
Um, I, um, no, that was a long time for me to do this because I have a hard time getting up and down. One, Tom needs one and, uh, and Tom needs one. And I need one, be sure you can get one with my notes on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let me have one of those.
And, um, the reason I'm doing this is because it was, um, a conversation and Tom brought up the first comment, and I'll wait for you to get it. This was taken from, thankfully, our video meeting. And it was a comment that Tom first brought to attention of the council about opening the bathrooms to the public and to the businesses. And, uh, he said, because we designed the community service to help maintain our cityhood and, and, uh, the bathrooms are locked up. I'm gonna skip Dana's comments because, well, anyway. Then Tom answered those comments with some things about, let's see about it, let's talk about it, let's think about it. That's sort of, y'all can see, and I will give you a minute to read what you said, Tom. No, that was a long time for remember for an old man. He doesn't look very happy about it.
I'm not happy about anything.
And then Luke said, yeah, yeah, and unfortunately, the town's position on that has been the exterior bathrooms are for rentals. But the thing that bothered me the most was when he added, I hate to go back twelve years on policy. And there was more discussion. Tom then said, well, let's find out about it, let's get into it and so forth and so on. And then the subject got really hijacked off onto another subject altogether. Now, being, having been on the council and not on the council, I know that things are interpreted differently. But from where I was sitting as a resident, is that the discussion got shut down and it never got brought into a discussion or a motion was made and the discussion locked. You have to have a motion for a discussion. Anyway, it was never brought before the whole council. And I think the Tom, argument that Tom gave here is every point he made was good. And now talking about a park and people visiting and walking paths, you're gonna need a bathroom where people, a public bathroom where people can go in. One of the arguments about it was vandalizing. Well, you've got cameras all over the place now, you can't take a deep breath without somebody knowing it. And I just don't think that's an argument anymore. You know who's there, you know who's doing it, get your new playback. Those bathrooms need to be open. I no longer have the child for the park. It didn't matter to me all that much anyway, I live right in the next block. But for people that are coming around and we are extending city limits from time to time, they're gonna need a place to go to bathroom, I'll begin from the wall. And I think that needs to be brought before the council, the whole council, for discussion of decision on that. Thank you.
A discussion, a discussion in opening up the bathrooms.
They don't even know the bathrooms there.
Yeah, they don't.
You wouldn't be surprised having not sweeping on the door.
Usually the people that are here. And it's been there and it's been an argument about that thing, but since it over.
Oh, I certainly, I certainly don't have any objections opening up two park visitors. What I do object to is providing public bathrooms for private businesses. And that is where I think the discussion started off.
That's, what businesses?
Well, they're coming in.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, we hope. I know that some of the buildings are getting worked on, um, to bring them up to code. We don't have, we haven't heard of any businesses coming in, but...
Go boost these now.
Brad, did you ever, it came up at the meeting in November, and is there, um, some sort of code or state or sanitation thing that requires there to be public restrooms if you have public spaces?
You have to have access to public facilities, yeah.
Well, if the park doesn't have access, if they're locked up?
Well, I mean, you can either provide them, in other words, you can have one building over there that would have it and one building next building that didn't have it, as long as that building can use one next door.
I think she's asking about the park visitors. Your, your, your question is about the park, correct?
The public, it's, it's, it stays locked up. What's the point? Haven't the dog run? Because they were renting this out when ones they already had.
Ms. Polly said, the town's not obligated to provide public restrooms by law.
Okay, that's my question.
If that's what you're asking.
That's my question.
And if you, if you know, the county closed up the public restrooms in courthouse years ago.
Okay, that was your question.
That got to be an issue.
So nobody has to furnish public restrooms in public spaces?
That got to be, got to be an issue.
Then y'all do the...
Grebel Street Park and the First Avenue Park. And council went ten years in Newman without providing them and then decided to provide them. But they also provide, uh, an individual who goes around every several hours and checks on the restrooms. And that was the problem with the county was they didn't have any, you would think in the courthouse, but they didn't have anybody going down and checking those restrooms. So, but to answer the question is, the town is not obligated to provide public facilities.
Okay, that was a long, my question, because I was under that pressure. But anyway, I still think that the park should be some of those bathrooms.
Well, I think we should provide it. We've already got them, number one. You need to provide it, if you can expand this park like we're talking about, you need to make, make them open for people that need them. Because one thing I know about being an old man is you need them.
I always go missing that, but that's fine.
I didn't, I, I saw my son on TV the other night. Uh, but I think that we ought to provide, we ought to have them open for those people up the street up there as well. We already have it. We have to charge a, a monthly fee to them to have them cleaned. That's fine because it's just sitting there. And that is an impediment to the expansion or to the reuse of those buildings.
Oh, well, Tom, I'm gonna try a little bit of efficiency.
The lack of septic, last go, lack of a, a bathroom is impeding the redevelopment of these stores up here.
Yeah.
We've already got it, they need it, do it.
Do you think they're gonna pay us a fee?
But you can tell them, if you want, here, you can, here's the thing.
You're gonna come and clean, you're gonna supply?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to come up with some mechanism for doing that and say, this is what it's gonna cost, do you want it or not? If not, then dig your own hole.
Okay, that sounds pretty good. Better than if you use the feet to help maintain it, keep it clean and have someone come and...
Who's gonna lock them up at nighttime, what time?
I think you need to put a time lock on it.
Yeah. Well, I think they tried before and that didn't happen.
I almost wonder if we may wanna unlock when you get here and lock when you leave. And that way, it's open while we have staff here.
Now, the only thing with that is we get truck drivers that stop, we get delivery people that ask, you know? And just mothers with kids that, you know, open the bathrooms. They're not asking, they're more or less like, open the bathroom, we need to go. So if you supply them with a key and then they have to return the key...
No, I wouldn't do that.
We tried that back when I was on the council, but it did not work.
That did not, I can tell you, that is not gonna work. Will not work.
It was a really nice park where we took the grandchildren over Easter holiday, spring break, and they opened it in the morning, they closed it in the evening.
Yes.
It's a jet bolt lock, nice bathroom, well maintained. I don't know who maintained it in the city or if they've got a park person, but it was, it was nice because like Tom said, us old guys have to go every now and then, like every fifteen minutes, so...
And with kids, it's like they, they don't have to go until that very second. And... Yeah, so...
If we're talking about, if we're talking about building bathrooms to sup, to supply, to supply the service to everybody, that'd be one thing. But we already got them. We're gonna, we're wrestling over who's gonna, who's gonna put the new toilet paper on the wall.
When we have rentals for the weekend for outside only, it's their job to clean up after their party. And, you know, there's a lot of outside events. What you gonna do when you have all these other people around the park walking?
You figure it out.
Yeah, I'm sure, but I'm just, you know...
And you figure it out, and if it's, we can charge for it, we, you know, up beyond it, we can charge for it. Maybe it's part of just what you have to accept for the people that are using the park.
And there are other options for the properties up there to come into compliance with state and local codes. You know, we have at least two options that are available to the property owners now that should they choose to accept a tenant and open up, that they can, they can put into place. And then a third one, if we're able to put in the, the septic line like we've talked around over the last, you know, several months. So they've already got two options up there. If we wanted to open up these down here for park visitors, I mean, that's something that staff can, we can look at a protocol and, and come back and propose something to council. But that, but just to be clear, and Brad can help us with this language, that would not alleviate the, the tenants to having agreements to use bathrooms up here.
And you might find that people that up here, rather than paying the cost of trying to do this to pay a small cleaning fee, they might wanna do that just because it's so expensive to install. And you're about ready to find out this, everything else, you might find that they would be more than welcome there. Like, hey, there will be...
Yeah, because, because if, when we do put the, the, and council approves eventually, of course, to, to put the, the septic tank up there and tied into our municipal system, there will be a monthly charge for that.
That's right.
So, you know?
I for one want anything to be done that will make that town flourish.
Me too.
That's true.
And you want, and you want this park, this park to be so welcome, like the walking trails and all, and everybody to come.
Yeah.
And we took our children, we took our grandkids over to another park and it was just swarming with kids.
Mm-hmm.
It was a huge park swarming with kids. And then we discovered Schutler. There was not a store there.
Yeah.
It was wonderful.
You want a beautiful park, you want a beautiful town, and bathrooms.
Yeah. I agree, I mean.
Because I think in the end, we did have to leave to go to the bathroom, to go to the bathroom.
I, I, I mean, as a mom, I know that's, you know, usually the, we leave when somebody's gonna go to the bathroom. Every single time. And that's the worst feeling of, you know, when you gotta go and you can't.
And also, I see it as a humanitarian, like if I knock on the door and they don't wanna let me in because I need to go to the ladies' room, I, 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 I just can't believe that one human to another wouldn't let you in. But I know, I don't deal with knockers and, you know.
We have found lit cigarettes in the, in the, in the trash cans out there. You know, there's just several things on my part as a worker here that I wouldn't open it up, because it's not been open since I've been here because of that reason. You know, once we get the park in, that might be a different story, but there needs to be somebody that's gonna maintain it and open it and close it and, you know.
And keep in mind, we have no, at this time, we have no public works staff.
None. It's blew it up.
We, yes, we, we, we have discussed it, and through the contract bidding process, that will be something for us to consider. Uh, when we go to bid out some of these contracts, I think that staff will look at, um, the cost of hiring someone to perform some of the contracted duties. So, if we had a public work staff, that, that would change the discussion, I think, a little bit.
We do have staff that cleans the building, though.
Yeah.
That's right, right.
Yes, yes ma'am, we do. Well, and actually, I mean, in, in both, but we're talking in an emergency.
The county is out, the county is out. They pulled the contract, it was only one year. Yep, we didn't know that.
But we do pay someone.
Let's see, that one person can do cleaning here.
Well, that, that she does, she, yeah, yeah, she, yeah, she does here and, and there, as well.
I mean, we can get somebody to do just the little basics, that'll mean, um, just check. Who cut the grass?
Harbor Valley.
Get one, make this person that can clean, cut the grass and it off. I mean, somebody out there, we will do that job.
Oh, yeah.
And if we were to add up the prices of the amount of pay for everything, I mean, it could be somebody with a part-time job, you know, four hours a day or three hours a day that. I bet if you asked her nicely, Tom would do it. Yeah. Yeah, somebody.
Sorry, what?
Just say yes. Just nod and say, okay.
I know, with a lot of little, little areas, just that everywhere, it can be done part-time. And that'd be our third. Some things, it'll keep the bathroom open, keep the buildings clean, keep the.
I don't have a problem opening and closing, but, um, I'm not gonna maintain it.
Another thing, another thing too with the, right now, is like if a bridal party has the park, you know, for their wedding out here, if you've got people using it, you know, they're using that facility to get dressed.
The bride and groom.
You know, they're using the, the men's and ladies' bathrooms to do that sort of thing, which would be, that would be rough, you know.
We need to think about that. Once we get the park out, how are we gonna do rentals? We'll have to take on a policy on that. Like you turn your, you turn your Beckham House into that.
Well, we thought about the Beckham House for our offices and opening up the mayor's office and putting a door through here to lead that to the brides, you know, something.
That's a good idea.
It can work, you know.
That's a real good idea.
Okay. Um, so Ms. Polly, was there anything else that you wanted to add in the public comments?
I did.
Oh, no ma'am, thank you. No, thank you. Um, okay, uh, clerk, you have some minutes, force?
Um, sure, I do. I actually, um, attached a copy of our first quarter financial update. Um, it's on the last page of your, um, agenda package. And so far, um, as of March the thirty-first, we have spent out twenty-five percent of our budget. And we've received forty-three percent of our budget.
Right.
Um, and actually, I cut about ten thousand dollars worth of April six checks before I updated my March spreadsheet. So this actually has ten thousand dollars of April's money in it, so that's actually less than twenty-five percent. Do y'all have any questions? I'm trying to close the SPOSS twenty thirteen account. I think I may use that little bit of money to finish off my.
Go ahead and finish hers.
Yeah, integrated science.
So is the eighteen thousand dollars in the twenty nineteen SPOSS that we received the first quarter, is that included in the ninety-eight?
Yes, yes it is. Yeah, that's just how much we received, um, to date.
Excellent. Uh, Dina, thank you for your, as always. You're excellent for maintaining our budget. The ladies do a wonderful job here watching our money, and I'm very proud that this is, this is something that we're very proud of. So thank you for your hard work.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have any other questions from public or council on the clerk's minutes?
I have no other items to use.
Okay. Um, moving on to the mayor's updates, we have touched on.
Blue.
Yes, sir.
You skipped over polling the council.
Oh, guys, I'm so late, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry about that. Um, I skipped way over, so my apologies. Um, I will start down from that end. Uh, Tom?
I have nothing.
Okay. Stan?
I got a couple of things.
Okay.
Coming in today on quarantine, I noticed our radar sign is just sitting there. Do we have any use for that? Have we paid pretty good money for that?
Um.
I think it needs to be in use somewhere. I mean, since we got the tables here, I think that could be better used somewhere else.
Um, I wanna talk to DOT and see if it is okay for us to put it on either fifty-four or one fifty-four.
I think they said yes.
I think, because I know the sheriff's office at one time was, we had one up there on one fifty-four.
Was that a mobile one, or was that?
Mobile one, yeah.
Okay.
I asked them to put it up there, and this one, Mike was the sheriff, and it.
Okay.
I've been there for a month or so.
I'll check my emails, but I feel like when we were first discussing this, we reached out to DOT, don't you? And just to check where we could use it.
And, and it was on fifty-four at one time?
No, I, I mean, but I think we checked all the areas, because we weren't gonna spend money on, so I'll look back at my emails, but I feel like.
And the other consideration for that, though, once we put it on a state highway, I have to change that battery every, what was it, every ten days?
Nine days.
Nine days.
Every nine days. And, and I certainly don't mind doing that and going back to it. However, I'm a lot more nervous about doing it on one fifty-four and on fifty-four than I am on quarantine.
So I would suggest buy one of those, um, the solar panels?
That was one thing, when I was changing the battery every nine days, that was one of the things that we looked at. And you can't swap them, you either buy the portable system that you can move around with the battery, or you buy the solar system that sits there and is permanent. However, I agree with you, we, we do need to do something with it rather than just have it sit there. I just, it's been.
The speed tables have cured the problem.
Yes.
Yes.
Or have improved dramatically.
So nice.
Yeah. If it, if anybody's speeding, they're gonna have to have the front end low-aim.
Yes, ma'am.
Hasn't been on Main Street yet.
Correct.
Four minutes of quarantine.
Correct, and I look for that, but there's, we would have to have a special pole set, and with the, um, with the speed table there, because I drove by it today when I came in, because I wanted to look and see if we had a pole.
You knew I was gonna ask.
And, well, I, well, I knew that, no, I knew that I knew that, I knew that I owed you an answer for it, as, as moral choice was. But there's just, we'd have to set a pole on Main Street, and I don't know that we'd get a good reading with the speed table being right there. So I think fifty-four, right there by the post office, may be a better spot to put it.
You could put it further down with fifty-four if you got another digit to go with it.
Right.
Another thing I have, and I've talked to you and I've talked to Dina, and I think y'all got a meeting with these people on Wednesday, but, uh, the Dollar General situation, I have a septic tank, it's been an ongoing problem for several years. And I don't think it looks good to have a porta potty sitting out front of a nearest building in town.
No.
Well, we have actually got some things for y'all to look at, Brad, were you passing the?
So I'm thinking that, uh, you know, you got options, but they keep putting a Band-Aid on it, like I mentioned before. And I think they need to be paid.
This is the Dollar General.
Fixing it, right.
Okay. No, 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 that's for y'all two to look at, and then Tom and Stan can look at the other.
I think we need to pull their C O or business license or whatever, to get it fixed. Because I think that's all where you can get their attention.
That's right.
Agreed. And I, and I have an update on that in the mayor's minutes, specifically on that.
That's all I have, yeah.
Absolutely, no, sir. There's nothing?
Um, nothing.
Miss Cynthia?
Not a thing, not a thing.
Okay, all right. Um, any public reaction or comments to the polling the council? Excellent. Um, okay, so I'll go ahead and hop into Dollar General. As Stan has alluded to, there have been at least, at least three failures. This is the third failure there that we know of. Um, and they are coming to, we, we have sent them the letter that you have in front of, in front of you. And they are coming to us to sit down on Wednesday morning, and, and we're gonna give them one of three, or we're gonna present to them three options. Temporarily suspending their occupational tax certificate, revoking the current occupational tax certificate, or discuss their plans to repair the system and provide for temporary alternative disposal until we can find a permanent solution. Now, the permanent solution is probably gonna be a sewer line, a commercial sewer line running up fifty-four north from the McIntosh Trail fifty-four intersection up to the north. Um, we don't have any figures on that yet, but that's the permanent solution. It also provides an additional benefit, because it provides sewer service to those four or five commercial lots that run from McIntosh and fifty-four north as well. I S E has done some work for the Water and Sewer Authority on mapping out that, that, that sewer line and how much it would cost and how much it would be. Um, I don't know what those are, but that will be something that comes before council in the near future, because we're gonna need to address it as a council.
Why is it, do we know why it's failing?
It's low, it's just a low, it's a high water table. Yes, well, it needs to either be pumped until they can get a temporary one on there, or it needs to be pumped, you know, every thirty days.
Well, no, the system needs a pump on it, so it doesn't.
Well, it's supposed to have a lift station there.
Yes, it ha, we think it has.
That's what's going bad.
Where does it lift it to?
When I first started working there.
The lift station, the, the little red, um, what do you call that? Yes, the alarm, it kept going off, but they had unplugged it.
Yeah, they didn't know what the alarm was, so in order to silence it.
It's a lift station, they have a lift station there, that's what's.
They're getting, they're turning, turning off the noise, yes.
Well, they have the big detention pond right beside it, it happens in the pictures, behind that, um, there was a big fence. The fence has a detention pond inside of that.
So I think they need to have a qualified professional address why it's, this keeps happening. They need to fix it. I mean, I get the sewer thing, but I don't think the sewer thing's a fix realistically right now. I think that's down the road.
Yes.
I think somebody needs to, uh, you know, licensed professional needs to address it, figure out what's going on with it. I mean, with as many sewer systems in this county, they've got several different options.
Well, as much money as this company has.
It's not unheard of.
It, it's ridiculous that they have a porta potty.
When y'all meet with them, I don't think you should give them an out.
No, no, oh, no, there is no out.
And I wouldn't even mention the sewer thing, because that, that costs us money. I mean, they, they need to address their sewer system.
Because I don't know of anybody else in the town that has an issue. I mean, the older buildings here, they've been there business, I never know if them have any problems.
Right. Yeah, so, so they are coming here, we're gonna, we're gonna give them those three options, and see, see what that's used to do.
Well, if we close them down, they'll be forced to get it fixed if they want to reopen it.
That store does, oh, Cynthia, that store does good business.
It does, it's always had.
As, uh, Jim McKnight said, coming out there, said, welcome to Scherzberg Walmart.
Now, one of the things that I do wanna make you guys aware of is once the clerk, and this is in our environmental ordinance, once the clerk issues the finding of fact, then they have the option to appeal it within ten days to the clerk, and then request a hearing before mayor and council to be held within thirty days. So our next council meeting is.
May the third.
May the third, which is about.
We do have a, um, steering committee meeting at twelve o'clock on April the twenty-ninth at noon. We could always have an additional council meeting after that, or if you wanna wait until May the third, we can do that. But I reached out to the property owners, Mary Coward and Jacqueline Gosh. Um, they sent us an email back and stated that, um, they have been contractually, contractually excluded from any operation, so they can't make them do anything as well. But I haven't heard a word from Dollar General.
I don't hear nothing from them until you force them on the issue.
Well, whenever I sent the lady that's over the occupational tax certificate, I sent her the actual letter, and she turned it around the same day and sent it to several other people. Environmental compliance, uh, please address the attached issues for this store, and I've yet to hear anything back.
When was this?
This was done on March the twenty-third, the day that I sent everything out.
Um, and in our conversations with the, uh, Coward County Department of Health, or Environmental Health, there have been no permitted septic repairs at this location.
Yeah, not acceptable.
So, and, and that, that was a surprise to me, because surely, a multi-billion dollar company would get their repairs permitted with the appropriate authority.
Was the septic system permitted? Do we know that for sure?
I mean, I, yes.
Dollar General has the money.
Oh, yes, sir.
Fredo Lake told me that that is their, that's why that's their largest account. I mean, bigger than Crowe Republic's law office, so what does that tell you?
Multi-million dollar account.
Who, who's, who said?
Fredo Lake.
Ah, okay.
Well, I mean, they got, they got more stores in one county than anybody else. They got one on that corner, I think we got like seven, eight in Coward County.
At least.
Yeah.
At least, yeah.
I mean, you got this, you got one on sixteen, you got one on Pine Road, that's just right here.
Right, yeah, you got the one all the way to Snowy and sixteen that way.
You got one at Thomas Crawford, you got some on the other side of town.
Yep, yes, sir.
There, there are about thirty between Perry, Georgia and Jackalaw.
Yes.
They would put one rubber fire ant nest sprung up. The first picture from the bar is rolling, I had a Dollar General up there.
Can worms. So that is, that is something that staff and I have been working through, um, even, even before this, you know, we've had conversations and, and reached out to a couple of different of their regional managers.
You know as well as I do, just looking at it, don't look good to have a porta potty sitting outside.
No, it is not.
No. We, we, we already. And the manager there, she tried to make phone calls to her corporate people who would be managing while she was there with us.
Yep.
Well, I know of another situation, one down in Yale. So Dollar General, don't get no hurt.
No.
Yeah, yep. Um, okay, so, uh, I, I do wanna try to move on, so that way we can go ahead and, and move on through this, and then into our executive session. G F L, we have, we had a request in an earlier council. Begin drafting the request for a proposal or request for quotes for that, and then we'll bring it back. We'll bring the bid package back to council for your approval and input, and then once that happens, we'll, we'll post it. Now, Dina, you have the details on when the current contract ends and what the mechanism is?
Yeah, Brad reviewed everything, and we have a current contract that expires in twenty twenty-two, I believe, is that what it was, Brett? And, um, so we're looking at going out to bid maybe in November with a D. And so, we're looking at going out to bid maybe in November with a December 31st end date. That way, we can make up our minds and figure out what y'all are going to do.
But the contract, the contract doesn't end until, um...
Next year, yeah.
Well, it doesn't end until April 30th of 2022.
That's a year out.
So, the suggestion is, in the RFP, to tell the people that the contract, their contract would not start until May 1 of 2022. And then, you go ahead and give them a 90-day notice. Because that gives you 120 days, and if you like the price you get and the service you get from the new bidder, assuming that GFL's not the low bidder, then...
I figured we could do that January 1, or the first meeting in January, do a 90-day notice.
And that also gives us time to work it into our budget going into '22.
Yep. I would expect it would be higher.
Yes, it's going to be.
Y'all getting any thoughts, whether or not?
I just sent you the soil map for Dollar General, and it says on there that... It's not.
Well, if you go back on Sunset, back three or four lots, there are about four lots back there that have been for sale for 20 years.
Is that where Celine Davenport lives?
Across the street.
Okay. She called. We had a big GFL issue this weekend where our scheduled day was missed entirely in Friday morning. I was getting 25, 30 calls and bam, 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 but we didn't know that trash wasn't getting picked up. And Celine was one of the people that called, so...
Well, they picked it up. This might have called, it's about June 6:40 this morning, they picked it up.
And I still, I, when I started sending emails Friday morning, they told me that they were on it. They were sending out another truck, but apparently they didn't send it out until today. I don't know.
Maybe this is the wrong term, but do we even know if this is a buyer's market or seller's market?
What? I don't think so.
No.
I think they're dying to keep us.
You think so?
Yes, I do, I do. But my biggest problem is, you know, service.
Yeah.
The elements of service is not complying to their contract.
Yeah.
You know, they're not picking up recycle, but every other week now. They will, they have stipulations, they have stipulations on, you know, our yard debris and won't pick up anymore.
Pitter mess.
I mean, you can't even put out tree limbs because they're not going to pick them up with their claw. They've always done it, now what made it change? Well, we need to go back and listen to the, I mean, and read the contract, and let's all work on the contract. Well, what happened where it changed from what we were doing? Because this is what I've been doing since I've been here. Nobody's ever made these changes, you know?
They've changed the four-foot deal?
No, they don't want to pick up tree limbs at all. Tree limbs, period. Even if you cut them in four-foot sections, you have to bundle them. They want your yard waste to be in brown paper bags.
Well, they don't think they got any competition.
We've got several companies. I've already done some research, and Brandy's got a lot of them. She's making some phone calls now. But there's about seven that we're going to be working with, just to see if they're, you know, if they're wanting to get our business. And the biggest thing is, you know, here, they don't have to worry about setting up 143 accounts. We're paying them. You know, we're paying them directly each month. So, to me, that's, that's a big incentive, you know? Oh, I know.
Yeah.
That's...
I know.
So, that's where we are specifically on the GFL contract. We're getting ready, we'll prepare the bid package, and you guys should have it. Give us 60 days.
Well, we're working on it now.
Working on it now, okay.
We're looking at Tyrone's right now. They're pretty good, about, you know...
Excellent. One of the other things that has come up, we had Team Hungry out here last month, or will be out here again. And during the first one, I walked around and just kind of accounted and looked at how many parking spaces we had open, but also keeping in mind the volunteers that they have here, the vendor parking. As you know, we share the space with Arbor Valley, and we're able to use that for some overflow parking. But even with that overflow parking, I walked around in Uptown and I counted, and we had about 15 to 20 cars that were just kind of tucked into different places. Most of it were the parking, it was legally parked, but then I got to thinking, what other parking options do we have for downtown Sharpsburg? Obviously, there aren't any parking lots available, but then I got to thinking about and looking at the right-of-way that we've got along some of our streets. And part of this started off with the parking at the library. If we cut that bush back, that's going to give us some space to hopefully tuck in a car. We'd have to get it striped, but I think we can do that fairly cheaply. But then I got to thinking about, what about some of the other right-of-way? If y'all look at the, at one of the plaques, you can see where Daniel stuck in just, it's not engineered, it's just in there so y'all can look at it. Some of the on-street parking options. And what I would like to do is talk to ISE and have them put together, do an aerial view, and identify some areas that if council chooses to, we can add on-street parking to our right-of-way and add on-street parking around town. Because as we continue to do events here, we're going to need overflow parking. Once these businesses open up up here, they will need parking. And the current parking configuration with two cars parallel parked in each of those divots just doesn't quite give us enough. And so, I hope with their help, we can come up with, at least present a plan to council to either add to or improve the on-street parking that we currently got. It's all rather nebulous right now, but I hope to have something for you guys in May or June. I think we probably can get it into May if I can, if I can get eyeballs on it and we start doing some map. But we need to look at additional parking options for downtown.
Now, we do that additional parking options, chop them out. Well, we have to break up the sidewalk.
Probably. In some areas, we would, but based on where the right-of-way is. Of course, that is... Unless we could talk to the property owners and get their agreement to bring the on-street parking right there. But that is something that they would, they would have to be involved with. And I would prefer that they request it for us, so that way there's a clear request and service being provided.
Well, an option would be around Beckham House over there, pay you, put some spaces over there.
Well, I think we ought to have a plan, but I don't think we ought to do anything until there's somewhere for people to go and do when they need to park.
Right.
I mean, the library sounds wonderful, but, I mean, wish Brandy was here. How many folks are using the library right now? Of course, COVID's put a big dent in it. But, you know, why provide parking spaces for nobody that's going?
Right. Well, now, and I will say, though, that the, we do have overflow that comes from here. We do have a need. We, I mean, if, when you're, if you come during the Team Hungry, you'll see cars come in and they'll circle once or circle twice, and then somebody's leaving, so they're able to tuck in. But we've got, you know, a handful of cars that park in the parking spots up there. And we, I mean, if you count the volunteers and the vendors, we do have a need for the parking just for the overflow from this facility. Now, of course, we don't know what it's going to do when we add the new spaces, but we're still going to need the vendor and volunteer parking.
Yeah, but you're talking about once every, what, six weeks, once a month?
Once a month, mhm.
That's a, that's a lot, a lot of expense, a lot of work to take care of a few cars once a month.
Yep.
Is that what they had thought of leasing some of these vacant lots around?
There are certain rules that municipalities have to follow when it comes to leasing property, and I'll let Brad speak to those, but I, I mean, I would cer, I would be open to it, yes.
That's a motherfuckin' crazy.
Mhm. But we need it. And we get all the businesses up here open, then we're definitely going to need it. And you're right, we don't have an immediate need for it right now, but now is the time to start planning to fill that need for when it does happen, because hopefully, things won't always stay the same. We always want things to change and improve and get better. You know, if you're not moving forwards, you're stagnant.
Show him the Ruby's Coffee House pictures.
Oh, that's right.
You know, if we have Ruby's come in, like, they're really wanting to do this, they're wanting to come over here to park. Well, what if we have two events that day? There's no way we can handle their parking and plus ours here.
What you have in front of you is a conceptual, Team Hungry is a nonprofit youth group that does a lot of community events and a lot of missionary work. And one of their main, one of their fundraisers that they would like to have is Ruby's Coffee's House. And they are in discussions with the property owners to make the improvements to that property that you see.
It's going to be coming out of their pocket, not the property owners.
Yes. So, they're going to be, they're going to be making those investments into the property. Yes.
Is it beautiful or what?
Yeah, swap it, because that's the daytime view. That's two different views. That's the daytime and this is the evening.
Beautiful. That's awesome.
But, but this is, this is what I'm hoping...
One's daytime, one's nighttime, so you can kind of see the difference.
Pass that down to them. So, I'm hoping that if we can, we can reach critical mass with the bathrooms and with the parking and with the tenants, it's just going to be, you know, the time is now.
Oh, my gosh. Glitter bomb.
What?
Glitter, glitter, glitter everywhere.
Oh, we hate glitter.
We call that the devil's dust in this house.
Yes. There is a specific...
I don't allow it in my house.
We do not allow it in here. You're going to get fined.
Yes.
Well, one particular party, we had a big Kinsenera party. We had to walk the glitter out for three months, so we don't do glitter anymore.
Yeah.
I even made them come back and try to sweep it and mop it, didn't, couldn't do it.
So, the, you know, the extra parking, I'm just, I'm trying to find a spot to put it. And honestly, the right-of-way seems to be, I don't know if it's going to be, it probably would be the cheapest, but it's probably the quickest and easiest way to add parking capacity.
So, right now, it's just two, like, in front of, I guess, almost, trying to make four instead of two, something like that.
Yes, to turn it to angles.
Yeah.
But it would require moving the curb and the bricks.
Yeah.
We could take the bricks up and save them, reuse them. So, you would mainly just be demoing concrete curb, replacing concrete curb, putting the bricks back in. But it will get close to those poles, those canopy poles.
I don't have a problem with that. I was just thinking about Joe's side. The one that you should have the lawsuit. Would this, us messing with that sidewalk, would it fix the problem that he thinks we should fix?
Well...
Or would it cause more problems?
That particular, that particular past and future defect or default was cured by the settlement. That's, that part is...
Is cured, yeah, I understand, but if he messed with it, it would make it worse, or...
And that is where I think it needs to be a request from the property owner to add the on-street parking,
Isn't it gorgeous?
To help remove the town's liability. But I will default to Brad on that and whatever mechanism we need to come up with.
I just don't want to cause more problems.
Agreed. And that's why I'm thinking maybe we need to start down here and move up and...
Be the example?
Be, yes, lead by example.
Do you know the pictures of the street stage will prove?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
I'm wearing my door on this.
What was he doing? I gotta go see about my mom.
I'll take you privately. About to yell, I'll send you a picture.
Oh, good. Oh, gosh, okay. I'm kind of nervous.
So, those are my mayor's updates. Do I have any questions from council on any of the topics that I brought up?
Who's going to maintain the food kiosk up there at the library?
I think there's three different entities that are doing that. Brandy said there's three different people, the church, and I'm not sure who else.
The individual that donated it.
Yes.
And then, I think Crossroads may be up there as well.
Okay. But there's, I think, paper towels, toilet paper, soaps and things of like that nature are going faster than just the foods, so...
Well, as it warms up, you're going to have some...
Ants.
No, you're going to have some, you're going to have some bloated cans and some ruptured cans.
Oh, 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 oh.
So, it's going to be responsible for cleaning it up. Long you got a list of names and numbers.
We have a food pantry. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, it's a, so we have a little food pantry that's now in front of the library. It was donated by an individual in the community, and it's going to be stocked by several organizations like Dina mentioned. And it's there. It's a small food pantry. And people can donate, people can pick up, and it's just something that's wonderful to have.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, we do need to go into executive session to discuss personnel. If I can get a motion to enter into executive session?
Make a motion to enter into executive session.
All right, Elizabeth has the first.
I second it.
Cynthia seconds it. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Motion to enter back into session?
Motion.
Second it.
All right, so...
Right, hold on, get that down, Julie.
And in there, it was Stan and Tom came out of executive.
Stan and Tom made a motion to exit.
Exit. And then Elizabeth and Cynthia made the motion to enter back into... Yes, sir, to authorize the mayor to sign the affidavit. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, all that being said, all business coming before council. With nothing else to discuss, there's a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
So, Stan and Cynthia, all in favor?
I'm missing it. Hold on.
Unanimous?
Yeah.
Thank you. We're adjourned.